...two thousand twenty to order. Clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Lombardi.
Present.
Mrs. Charas.
Here.
Mr. Connell.
Here.
Mrs. Johannes.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mrs. Mayo.
Here.
And Mrs. Vada.
We have a quorum. Let's move on to the pledge of allegiance.
I.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance. To the flag.
The United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice.
And justice for all.
Oh, actually, we do have public comment on here. Is there any public comment? Community comment? I don't think there's anybody on from the public. You see anybody, superintendent?
No, not on my list here.
Okay. So then we'll move to the consent agenda. Does anybody want to take anything off the consent agenda? Hearing none, I want to take a motion to pass the consent agenda as presented.
Still moved.
Motion is made in a second?
Second.
In a second. You have that, Fatima?
I missed the... Who made the motion? I'm sorry.
I think it was Ms. Johannes.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Do you want to roll call us? If you don't mind?
Yes. Mr. Lombardi.
Yes.
Mrs. Charas.
Yes.
Mr. Connell.
Yes.
Mrs. Johannes. Mrs. Johannes.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mrs. Mayo.
Yes.
And Mrs. Vada.
He's there. Are you mute? No. Hey, could you lean forward?
Oh, I said yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, sorry, okay.
Okay. Reports, Superintendent, you're on.
A couple of things. Number one, I just wanted to update you on the distant learning progress that we have right now. So I'm sharing out a screen. We went into this kind of on an emergency basis, although we were very well prepared. After a couple of weeks, when the announcement was made that this was going to extend, then we really started to take a look at our processes and procedures in our organization. And we had some great conversation with some students, specifically the high school student council, along with a lot of feedback from parents and teachers. And we started to make some changes in the delivery of distance. And we set out some guidelines, one to keep it flexible, to understand that we have a lot of parents who are in many different situations. Some are schoolwork, working, some are working from home. We have kids who are being dropped off with neighbors or relatives, so we had to come up with a way that was going to organize this the best possible, best way possible, and to do the best we can to reach all students according to their needs. So we made some adjustments, and one of the things that we did immediately afterwards is that we put out a survey to all the parents to get their feedback on how we're doing, how they're doing. What can they suggest that we can do better? So I just want to share with you just the summary of this survey. So right now, in fact, this is live, it's one hundred seventy-five responses, and we can see the breakdown by grade level. The grade one parents are truly engaged, grade two, and you can see the percentage of the parents with students at each grade level. So the first question we wanted to note was, is the amount of work is balanced? One is disagree. Four is agree. So we were very pleased to see the results. We're very much in favor of the parents feeling that the workload that the students have been given been given is balanced. Now, where we get into these ones and twos, we do have comments, we do have data on things that we can improve. I should say that in the ones, for, this one has ten people answered one, that they disagree about the balance. I should tell you that seven families answered one for everything. So, and then for those who answered two in this area, these are a lot of students who have struggles learning to begin with. They can do different stuff in order and such. So when you're talking about assignments being balanced, you have students that can be very easily overwhelmed if they're not in their normal routine. So that is reflective of that, along with some of the, you know, some of the things we read in the comments. Assignments and timelines are organized. One of the things that we tried to do is not overwhelm the student, overwhelm the families. Allow them to plan their time, allow them to get extra help when needed, and not feel that they were backed up into a corner regarding the time. Expectations are clear. All right? Again, the majority of families feel that the expectations that we're giving the students are clear. There has been some concerns about testing quizzes and grades for which we are working that out. We've already made some adjustments specifically at the middle school and high school in which the third quarter grades are actually going to be rolled in fourth quarter or will come in the semester grade. Along with some other modifications we're making. My child is receiving adequate instructional support. And again, this is great from a distance. We're not physically there with the kids, and the majority of the families feel that even though we're doing distance learning and even though we're in a difficult situation, we're still delivering supports and their kids are still getting what they need. Obviously, again, for some kids, you know, in-person, face-to-face, physical education is much better. But we're doing what we can, and we're making as many accommodations and modifications for anybody who falls into this area. Child is receiving adequate social support. Now, this was a concern, and one of the feedbacks from some of the parents is that, I mean, the important thing about school is the socialization, to be with their friends. So one of the adjustments that our teachers made is that we had started assigning a number of group projects to have groups of students work together. So they may not be able to be physically in the same classroom. They can go into their own Google Hangout and their Google Meet and collaborate on projects. And then finally, receiving adequate technical support. And again, the majority of families feel that they're getting adequate support. One of the things I'll let the principals talk about is that we did ask for any additional comments that they have, and we had a number of very insightful, thoughtful comments, a lot of very supportive comments, a lot of comments in which they were praising the teachers and how accommodating they had been and how in touch. We have some families that have friends who are in other, have been to another district, and they're just absolutely thrilled with the North Smithfield approach to distance learning. So overall, it's been very positive. And then where there are some comments of criticism, it's all constructive, and these are things that we can help out and reach out for the families with this. One of the things that I wish I had done with the survey as the principals were going over them. Now, principals did break out there at schools and reviewed everything with their leadership teams and their faculty. One of the things I wish I had done is collected their emails or names, because based on some of the comments, there would have been a few parents we would have just reached out with directly that they they put in a specific issue with their child into the comment. I don't have their email because this was an anonymous survey. So we did, I did put out in a letter to all the families, I shared some of the results, I also posted on Facebook, and encouraged anyone who has any questions, comments, or concerns regarding distance education or how their child is doing, reach out to the teacher, reach out to the school council, or to reach out to the assistant principal and the principal. And again, it was just the assurance that we're all there to help. So what I'd like to do is actually jump to part C, and it's administrator's verbal report. So rather than having everybody write up a written report, I asked the principals to be here. Perhaps, you know, they can discuss the results of the survey, how they're approaching distance learning, what they're learning from it, and, you know, and where we're possibly going to go. So unless anybody has any direct questions regarding the survey, I'd like to just bring it over to the principals. Each of them take a couple of minutes and talk about their school and their program and how they're dealing.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
So where are the questions from? Like, did you make these questions up? Did you look around for a distance learning survey?
I couldn't find a good distance learning survey. The ones that I found were basically all regarding technology. I made these questions.
No, I like the questions. I'm just curious to know where you found them, because I've been looking around myself, so. Thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna stop the share, okay? So Jen, would you like to start with NSCS?
Yep, no problem. So hi, everybody.
Hello.
It's good to see everybody. So at the elementary level, one of our main focuses was really the social, emotional well-being of our kiddos. One of the biggest things that we've done is really recognize that our kiddos and our families are going through a huge transition, and that is one of our biggest concerns. So one of the one of the greatest things that we've done as a school community is really the outreach to the families. So we communicate with our families every Sunday and Wednesday. On Sunday, all of our families receive, our K-1, 2 families receive a slide deck which outlines the entire week of learning for their students. And each slide deck, which is almost like a PowerPoint presentation, is outlined Monday through Friday, so families know exactly what to do each and every day. Embedded within each of those slide decks are instructional videos that are now being made by our staff. So our staff is kind of taking it to the next level. They're recording themselves teaching, and they're embedding those lessons within the slide deck, so the kiddos are receiving instruction from their teachers essentially. In addition, all of our staff members are doing at least two Zooms or Hangouts per week, and they are not instructional time. Those are simply a time for the class to come together, to see one another, to kind of, to do some talking. In addition, Rachel and I do a Good Morning North Smithfield Elementary message every morning, and a Good Night North Smithfield Bedtime Story every night. And then on Saturdays, we've been running a Facebook Live event. Within the school, we've been doing like a teddy bear hunt, a scavenger, an egg scavenger hunt, where the kiddos can interact with us as we're moving through the school. So really, our biggest focus, we meet periodically with our social services team to really do a lot of outreach support to that. We're kind of hitting with our littles. The honeymoon phase is over. So a lot of families are seeing a lot of breakdowns within their students and within our kiddos. So we've been doing a lot of community outreach with our social services department, as well as Rachel and I, to really ensure that our our kids know and our families know that really their family is the top priority, and then we'll catch them up when we get them back. So that's kind of, that's where we are right now, and we miss them desperately. It's really not a fun place. NSCS is not fun without little people there at all. Any questions?
No.
Sounds fabulous.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So if you're bored at ten o'clock on Saturday, you have nothing to do, please join us on Facebook.
Okay, Mr. Lahar with the dangerous-looking lockdown beard. Right? This is the, I told some kids in a Google Meet that I wouldn't shave it until we were back, and that was weeks and weeks ago, before I thought that it was gonna be a really long time, so I don't think I'm gonna keep that promise. But at least for the next few weeks, I'll probably keep it going. As far as we're concerned, our staff and students and families are doing an outstanding job. It has been, it has blown my mind how much people have really stepped up to the plate and what a great job that they've actually been doing. Our kids, our teachers have Google Meets every day. Some are mandatory, some are stopping if you need helper questions. The attendance of those meets is really good. Kids are going, kids are asking questions. It's become a social time for kids as well, the kids, they get to see each other, they get to talk, they get to communicate. So they literally have direct access to their teacher every single day. I'm getting feedback. Is that me?
I hear it. I don't know where it's coming from.
Okay, come here. That's been going really well for us. We also have tried to keep kids engaged from a school-community sense. We had a spirit week the first week, where we had kids do different dress-up days, and we have an Instagram page, and I don't know if you have Instagram. If you have a chance, check out the North Smithfield Middle School Instagram page. Kids send in pictures of themselves dressed up for a certain event, like a red, white, and blue day, or North Smithfield Day. So that all those pictures, there's a picture of Mr. St. Jean doing the workout Wednesday during one of those weeks. So we've tried to engage the kids that way. We did a scavenger hunt last week where kids had to take selfies of themselves with a variety of different objects, like a rotary telephone, or two different kinds of leaves to get them outside and things like that. And the kid who got all the pictures in first got a prize, and we got them gift certificates to the beef barns. We wanted to try to support our local businesses as well. We've been at this as well. We've been really pushing that to the kids, too, that, you know, anything local that they can do right now is the best thing, is the best possible thing. You know, try to take this as a chance to build community, and, you know, and I think when the kids look back on the quarantine part for twenty years from now, it's not gonna be a specific math fact or a specific date in history. It's gonna be what they did on a daily basis and how the community kind of rallied and came together. So we're really supporting those types of initiatives as well. They've been really good. Our guidance people have been doing a newsletter about every week. It's been going home to families with some tips about how to keep things stress-free in the home, and how to monitor your kids and see if they're anxious, and are they spending too much screen time, and some helpful tips for parents as far as how that goes. As far as the survey that Mike sent out, our feedback was really good. Again, surprisingly, surprising to us was the majority of the criticism for the middle school was we were doing too much, that it was more work than kids could handle, or it was more things than parents could keep organized. And we've gotten some lovely feedback from parents, like some just very detailed, specific emails with some thank yous and with some feedback about things that they're struggling with at home. And it hasn't been like complaining or angry. It's been like, hey, look, we're all in this together, but as a parent who's home, I have three kids. One's a little kid at Jen's school. You know, I kind of need my middle school kid to be able to do more stuff on his own, and when you assign assignments every day, I have to go in and look and check and make sure that they're doing it. So we've moved things like that around. We're not assigning every day. We're putting things out Mondays and Wednesdays. Then Friday is kind of a check-in with everybody to see where they're at type of day, so that parents have a better chance to keep their kids organized. That's been met well, and parents have liked that, as opposed to every morning, the kids, we wanted the kids to have a routine, so we wanted them to get up every day, log on, get their assignment, do their assignment. But a lot of the parents who are trying to help are like, listen, they have seven different teachers, and you want me to find seven different assignments, five days a week? That's a lot for me. Can you help me out? I'm trying to help my kid out. So things like that that we didn't look at, we were looking at it as a teacher-student classroom type of thing, and we didn't really think about the family and the mom who's at home with three little ones and working from home and trying to get the schooling done. So we were trying to give them as much as possible. And one of the lessons that we've learned really is, in this time, less is more. And we want to be there as a support and a resource and get as much done as we can educationally, but we don't want to overwhelm anybody. And so dialing it back was kind of our focus this week. But that's kind of where we're at.
Great.
Thank you. Mr. St. Jean, your mic's up.
A lot. I'm so busy trying to control everybody else's that I forget about my own.
All right.
Mr. McGee, you're up.
Yeah, so the high school, very similar to the middle school. It's a learn-as-you-go process for us. We thought we were doing a wonderful job at first, and then we met with the student council. And the good thing about having the student council is these kids are honest and they're articulate, so they tell me exactly what I need to do to kind of tweak and dial things in. We realized we're trying to be flexible, so we're trying to allow teachers and students to come at all different times, record meetings and so forth, but that proved to be difficult to manage. So what we decided to do is, anytime we have assessments or Google Meets, they have to be done at specific times, depending on the period that the teachers teach. It doesn't follow our exact schedule. On Mondays and Wednesdays, we have odd days, and then Tuesdays and Thursdays, we have even days. So we try to restrict it to certain times for them. But we are getting, we are, like I said, we keep dialing it in faster and faster, and we're doing a better job with it. Right now, I have a bunch of worried seniors about the events and so forth. So that's one of my major concerns right now. I just had a petition issued to me yesterday saying that they don't want to do their senior project. It's normally a big presentation that they do. We have modified it. We scaled it way back for them. They already have the bulk of the work done already. We already waived the part where they would have to go out and do field work if they haven't completed it, but they still have to complete the written portion of it, and then present something electronically still, even though it's not gonna be the actual presentation. And I got a lot of pushback from that, because they just felt like they've been robbed of so many things that they wanted to pass on something. And the tough part is that this group has been a very ambitious group. As far as their prom, they had booked a prom to be on a boat leaving Boston. We've never done anything like that before, so that was pretty ambitious on their part. That got canceled. For their senior trip, instead of a one-day excursion to Block Island or something like that, they picked a three-day trip out to Ohio. It got canceled. Graduation right now doesn't look like it's gonna happen. We're trying to find ways for the awards night to happen and everything. So we do have a lot of good ideas. I just met with some people today about how we can move that forward. Right now, everything's still up in the air, because technically, we're still on school until May eighth, right? But I would assume that we would probably follow suit with the rest of us, and we'd have to do something a little different. So we're investigating different possibilities. One idea was to go to the drive-in and videotape the graduation and have it held at a drive-in. I actually made contact with the drive-in just to see the availability of it. Apparently, I was the tenth principal to inquire. So, and they didn't say no, by the way. They just said, they are having problems with the theater itself right now. One of their screens is dismantled or something, blah, blah, blah. They didn't say no anyway, but that's just, it's a possibility. We do have some other ideas that we're floating around that would probably work just as well, too. I'm just trying to get as many ideas as I possibly can to try to make something happen. So we haven't given up on them, but my seniors are a little a little down in the dumps right now. But the rest of everybody, everybody's pulling pretty strong. My teachers are doing an excellent job. For the most part, the kids are pretty positive. It's just, it's just my seniors feel like they've been cheated. And I can't fix that, but I will do everything I can to make it better.
And we certainly have the full support of the entire school committee. I mean, whatever it takes to, you know, to pull something off to, you know, honor the seniors and give them something that they will remember is absolutely a priority. Once we, I'm anticipating getting word this week as far as the extension of school closure, and, you know, once we have some firm guidelines, you know, we will set things in motion.
Mike, can I say something?
Sure.
Yeah, I just want to follow up on that, because, you know, we talked about, we did talk about it last time, and again, I do think that's very important, that we try to come up with a few original things for the seniors. And hearing Tim's report, just one thing I was thinking, if the drive-in's not available, would there be an option that like one of the, you know, looking into like the Lowe's, Walmart, that area, or the Coles, you know, one of those big lot there where some of those stores are closed down right now, or, you know, not operating at the moment? Just thinking about that maybe is enough, but another big space in town that might be...
Yeah, we actually, we actually had a pretty, pretty good discussion today about a possibility of, and I don't want to say this is what we're doing, but it's an option. It would be possible to get Wi-Fi access on the school property. So I would, one of the thoughts was to actually put cones up in designated areas all throughout the field, and you drive your car to your designated cone, and then we could broadcast the graduation via Wi-Fi over YouTube, and they could have their Chromebooks in a car. And we also talked about having the Skyjack out there and dropping the diplomas from the Skyjack as each kid came up and picked it up one by one. We'll figure something out. We'll figure something out. I'm trying to make it fun for them as well. So whatever happens, we'll, something will happen. I just don't know what it is yet.
If you need anything from us, let us know, because obviously, those kids, yeah, they do feel like they've been robbed, and it's no one's fault.
I appreciate that.
Yeah. I know you do. I mean, I just...
But I had, Mr. Kaparko was out there today. I didn't know if we could even do that, and then he said that he's pretty much sure he'd be able to do that. He'd have to put up some access points outside for that event and so forth, just to make sure that it worked out that way, but at least it's a possibility. Because I wouldn't have to be at a drive-in to do it that way. I could do it, like, we could be on school property, which I think the kids would like to do. They want to be together, yet they can't be, so that would kind of give them that aspect of it as well. And I don't know. If anybody has any good ideas, shoot them my way, but I'm still looking, and I continue to do it, and we'll come up with something.
That's great. In fact, I think maybe I'll reach out to you tomorrow, because my old technology director mind just started kicking into gear, and I started thinking about a number of things we could do for access, so.
But I looked, I mean, I had the Google Maps out with the satellite imagery and everything, and I was placing cars out on the field, and there's enough room to do it. I just don't know. I mean, I can definitely get the kids a car apiece, and maybe more than that, but it's just, it's gonna have to be something that we have never done before. It will be, it will be a memorable graduation, let's put it that way.
That's great.
And the possibility of just postponing it till June, the end of June, or is not...
It will probably be, it's gotta happen before summer. Because I've got people going in the military, people traveling to schools and so forth, so it's gotta happen before summer break, you know? However it happens, it has to happen then, because I just won't have the clientele later on, and I don't want people to miss out. So something will happen before the summer.
That's gonna be tough.
Yes, it is.
You'll do it. You'll get it.
Yes, we will.
Okay, thanks. Last thing I want to do is just, this was a request. This typically comes up around budget time. And here's the thing, you know, K-12 education, we are very personnel-intensive. And so the inevitable question comes up, you know, do we have too many, too much staff? So one of the things I wanted to share with you, and this is before I send it on to the town and on to the budget committee, is our projections for next year. So in our budget, we are not asking for any additional staff. In fact, over the past three years, I think we've trimmed about maybe fifteen positions. And we're at the point where the only place to trim would be to cut entire programs, but one of the things that you also have to think about is if we cut a program, that still leaves a hole in a kid's schedule, and they have to go somewhere. So what I wanted to do is just share with you some of the numbers and the projections for next year, along with the calculations for how many classes we need or what the average class size is. So looking at NSCS, these are the anticipated enrollments for next year. So our PK, about forty-six students, and they're in two classrooms, a half day, so there are four classrooms, about twelve for a class. The maximum is fifteen. So we're right up there within the max. And we also have about half of the students are paying tuition to attend. So in kindergarten, we have five classrooms. The average class size is twenty. Right? So in one of the calculations always comes up, okay, well, what is the maximum? It's twenty-five. If we were to eliminate a kindergarten classroom, yes, we would be at the contractual maximum for kindergarten, but I would say two things here. If a new student moved in, we're opening up a new classroom anyway. All right, so also, at twenty-five, right now, twenty, twenty is a good number. All right, so also at 25, right now 20, 20 is a good number for kindergarten. Our 25 max is actually one of the highest in the state. And, but I should also say for grades K1 and 2, there is legislation out there to put the maximum enrollment for those grade levels, Act 20. So we are significantly over what the state will be recommending as the maximum for early elementary, early child education. So where we stand right now is we're recommending keeping it at five kindergarten classrooms. Go up to 25 in a kindergarten would just be, you know, detrimental to their education and start at school, starting out in school. In grade 1, 2, and 3, if we were to reduce a class, we're over the contractual maximums. 5, I mean, grade 4, we could hit 28 in a classroom if we went before. But if you were to ask Mrs. Dano and Mrs. Salvador, the current third grade, how would they be at 28 in a classroom? All right? So I think you would get a very honest answer and say that is not a very good mix. No.
They're good kids. They just have a lot of needs. So we don't have five, we could use 20 classrooms to separate them all out, but five would be great.
Which is what we have right now.
Right.
All right. Grade 5, we currently have six grade 5s, so we'd be reducing it to five grade 5s. However, grade 6, whether it's five grade 6s, we need to raise it up to 6. And again, those class sizes would be at or over contractual maximums. 7 and 8, all right, so here's the thing with middle schools. First of all, once you hit grade 7 and 8, you start switching into a team. Rather than a primary teacher, you have a team, English, Math, Science, and Social Studies. And it is that transition between elementary and high school. So you are taking multiple classes, you do in high school. However, you have a team of teachers who votes you, you know, across all the different classes. Oh, that's sort of like that parent attention personalization that you get at the elementary level. We have in grade 7 and 8, three teams, but here's the thing. We have too many kids for two teams. And so inevitably it comes up, and I've had to do this when I've scheduled my previous district. But actually, it was terrible. I had to go into one middle school and tell them that based on the enrollments that we had eliminated a team that was in English or Math, a Science, and a Social Studies team. And it was devastating for the school. It was devastating for the teachers. Fortunately, it was a big district and there were positions for English, Math, Science, and Social Studies open in other middle schools and at the high schools. So nobody lost a position. But it's one of the things that when I'm looking at scheduling that I see, I do have to look at where a position could be eliminated or should be eliminated. All right, so in this case, at the middle school, we have too many kids for two teams. We don't have enough kids to completely max out three teams, right? However, at the middle school, because, you know, I could talk about social, emotional, and developmental issues and puberty and all that, it's just a goofy age, you know? And to be honest, you don't want to have 28 goofy 7th and 8th graders in a classroom trying to get instruction. We're very comfortable with the balance that we have there. So this is stuff that I will share with you. This is the current enrollment at the middle school. And we can see in the art classes and the way you read this is that there are three, it's a trimester, three classes, 22 kids. One has three classes, trimester 1, trimester 2, trimester 3, 8 kids, it's maximum. Art 7, three classes at maximum. Art 8, you know, have, you know, two classes, four together, whole group, which it has to do with scheduling. It has to do with eighth grade. It has to do with class sizes. And, you know, given that fact that we have one art teacher, if she were to have two more classes of 28 kids, we would lose an art teacher. There's no way you can make that. But just going through, I'll share the numbers and just keep in mind that where you see a lower amount of students in grade 8, they're going to be bigger next year because 7th grade is bigger going into 8th grade. All right, so these aren't course requested numbers for next year. These are this year's schedule with a bit of extrapolation to see how it would plug into next year's enrollments. But I can share this with you. We put some notes together. You can see that, you know, the class sizes of the literature classes in the 7th grade, 24, 23 students in the 5th grade ELA classes. Math 8, again, 8th grade has a lower enrollment this year than it will have next year. These numbers will go up. And we also have students who are also getting math support at this time. So they're being, you know, they're not necessarily in full amount over here. So I'll share this with you, but looking at this as somebody who schedules, somebody who can look for areas that where we may need realize some savings, there's nothing to cut short of dismantling the entire school or teaming, which, you know, again, if we save a half a position, you know, you have to factor in what is the cost to save maybe half a teacher? Because there's nowhere in here we could eliminate a full teacher. And if we did eliminate a full teacher, like, and I've talked about this with Mr. Bahar, 7th grade has on their team two English teachers, one teacher reading, one teacher writing. And, you know, that is by design because as the kids go up through the elementaries, they have reading interventionists. The models start shifting when you get to the secondary. We have math interventionists at the middle school, but we don't have the same amount of country of reading interventions. So instead, we have two ELA classes at the 7th grade. So you could look at it and say, oh, they'll need two Englishes. Let's eliminate one. Well, the kids still need to go somewhere, right? So we'd have to hire another elective teacher for the kids to fill up the kids' schedule. Or you would really would have to hire a reading interventionist to make up for the loss of the double block of literacy in the 7th grade. Again, these are all things that I look at when we're checking out budgets and we're making staff requests. Now, over at the high school, it gets a little bit more complex. And again, I'll share this out with you. Here are the classes and the current enrollments. We don't anticipate enrollments dropping at the high school next year. In fact, over the coming years, we anticipate the enrollment will begin to increase, whether it's students tuitioning in from TDE programs or as new housing development, you know, within the towns start coming online and families are moving in. You know, even some of the housing for seniors that have been purchased the condos, one of the concerns, and I think Fred Johannes mentioned this, you know, I looked at it and I looked at it on the surface that, well, that's not going to affect our enrollments because seniors, people without families will move into it. It reminded me, and in fact, I even met somebody who planned this, has this beautiful house, no kids, on her own. She wants to stay in North Smithfield. She's going to sell her beautiful old house and move into the condo. And that house has six bedrooms. So, you know, we're going to see a turnover and more families coming in. So looking at the high school, I could tell you, I am really comfortable with these numbers. There are things that I do look at. For example, there are four sections of English 10. And I should tell you, when you look at this, Part A is the first semester. Part B is the second half of the class in the next semester. Technically, again, if I look at this, four sections of college rep English, 28 is the maximum. We could eliminate a section and move these, and these three sections alone could handle 28 kids in a class. All right, it will fall within the contractual maximums. However, I can also tell you, even by just looking at this, there is no way with three sections, everybody who needs to take English, college English will get in it. Because even here, you have 22, 16, 19, 26. There's an imbalance, all right? Because the kids are taking other classes. They don't all, like in the middle school, go lockstep from period 1 to period 2 to period 3 to the same English, Math, Science, and Social Studies. They're all over the board according to their needs, their interests. And so the high school scheduling is more complicated. But again, I'll just emphasize with all of these that, yes, we could maybe reduce one section of a class. And I've done calculations where if I were to say maximize the English department and just move every class up to 28 if they could fit, get rid of the elective classes, don't give kids choice because choice is a lot more difficult to schedule than just giving everybody a set, you know, program of study. We could probably save half an English teacher. But then you have to question, what is a half position worth? Is it worth disrupting the entire English department? Is it worth taking away electives and choices within the department? And is it worth trying to hold on or find a half a teacher? So in the science classes, yes, I could go through and based on the class sizes, probably have a .8 science teacher. Science is difficult because now you're locked into certification. It's not just one science teacher who teaches science. You have to be physics, biology, chemistry certified. We don't have anybody who's certified in multiple, you know? We have teachers who are certified in one of those disciplines. If I were to go through here and say, eliminate and make a science teacher a .8 just to save a few dollars, all right, I could tell you, one, we'll never get a science teacher because they are in high demand. If a science teacher leaves, it's near impossible to replace them. They would be a computer science teacher. If we lose a computer science teacher, they don't exist. They're not coming in. So again, looking at the numbers, I do look for areas to save. I look for areas that we can save that won't disrupt the kids. We've made a lot of those hard choices going up into, including last year with the closing of Halliwell. There isn't anything left to cut that won't really be detrimental to a large group of students, you know, trying to take courses or want to participate in various programs. Again, I don't know what the budget is going to hold. I don't know where we're going to stand. But when we presented the budget to you to then present to the town, to the town, I didn't ask for any additional staff. We could use interventionists. We could use a behavioral specialist. We could use social worker and, you know, another psychologist. But we're also very mindful of financial constraints. And we're also mindful of a perception out there that maybe we have too many people. Maybe we're below you. And what I can tell you, we do not have too many people. We are not loaded. And we've made some very hard decisions to get to the point where we're at right now. I will share this out with you and post it and also share it with the budget commission. What I didn't want is to have folks just look at numbers if they're not knowledgeable in program requirements, federal and state mandates, along with the nuances of trying to schedule 500, 600 students with a wide variety of courses to meet their interest and needs. I just needed to get that out there before data goes.
Does anybody have any questions for the superintendent?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment. You know, we're very proud of our school system and our school system does extremely well. And that's the reason that the school system does well because we have what we need, barely what we need, but we have it. So I, you know, I think that we can support that.
Absolutely. I don't think that there's one person on the committee that wants you to increase the student-to-teacher ratio. So keep moving forward and as Vice Chairwoman Mayo said, that's why we are where we are.
Mr. Chimek, may I comment?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Christine, I don't know if you want to jump in, but we heard this stuff a few, couple of months ago. I think when the superintendent's presenting, you know, we're, I think the school committee's on board. It's just, I think we may very well need to make this argument, we may need to present these figures and this argument to the council at some point. That's when we may have to make our pitch. I don't know. I mean, we're getting a little bit ahead of ourselves, but that may be, it's not to us. Though I appreciate the superintendent going through these numbers again with us, but we may be having to make this, we may have to go through the very same presentation virtually to the council.
And I don't think that's a, I don't think that's a bad idea, Bill. I actually think it's a good idea because we understand what he's telling us. And we know, like Mrs. Mayo just said, we know how well our kids do and how hard our teachers work. But we have the advantage of having it explained to us. And I think the public needs to know how that happens. And it's real easy to say, put 25 kids in a classroom, but then you get number 26 and you've got to hire a new teacher again. It's not fully understood. And then by the time you have to hire that new teacher, you don't have the best of the bunch to hire from. So our budget stuff isn't the greatest in the world either because we don't get our numbers in time for the administrators to be doing their hiring before they know how much money they're going to have to do what they have to do.
And you know, two mysterious points as well. I think the more that we can repeat this around town, the better off it's going to be. Because, you know, we all know, we've all come across folks who will say things like, oh, well, you know, enrollment's not where it needs to be, so why do we have all these teachers? And it's easy to make that argument. It's lazy to make that argument, but it's easy to make that argument. And I think this type of presentation, you know, if it is brought out again and again and again so that people know how thoughtful we need to be about staffing numbers and ratios, I think that's great, you know, so.
I agree. I agree. Thank you, Mr. Saint Gene.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have one other question that related back to, just something I wrote down that would kind of goes back to distance learning update. Are we beyond that? Are we still on that or?
No, we're on.
Okay, I just have a question for either the principals or the superintendent to just comment. Are we doing anything or what are we doing? Three areas I got, I don't mean a long explanation. Just, I'm just know this is always a problem when we do distance learning. Kids who have the physical therapy services, occupational therapy, and some of our students who have higher special needs. I'm not talking about special needs outside of the district. I'm talking about kids who are still in our district but have, you know, a lot of learning differences. Are we doing any, how are we meeting those virtually, if at all?
Jen, do you want to take that?
Yeah, we have our life skills class, which is probably, you know, our most needy kids that we have in the building. That class has been unbelievable. Ms. Mitchell is doing such a good job with them. She meets with them every day. They have class time. They have instruction time. She does one-on-one time with them. She has this whole like token economy where if kids do their assignments and they do their work, they get to like buy things from a little store of like knickknacks and prizes that she has. She's doing a virtual online store and letting them show up at like a Google Meet and pick out their prize and is mailing it home. The parents of those kids came in to get Chromebooks from me a week or two ago and they could not have spoke highly, more highly of the job that she's doing with our neediest kiddos. I know some services like OT and PT, we're not doing that right now because it's hands-off and social distancing.
Yeah.
You really can't. But as far as our kids with IEPs and our kids, our neediest kids, I was concerned about them when we started. And again, I'm blown away by the efforts of... And again, I'm blown away by the efforts of the parents, the kids, and the teachers. It's been amazing. Like seeing those kids online in a chatroom is, they're so excited, they have so much fun. It's, it's been really good. It's been excellent.
Yeah. And piggybacking off of that, the same thing is happening at the elementary level. Mrs. Austin is doing a phenomenal job running daily meetings with all of her students, one-on-one Zoom calls, small group Zoom calls. And then for our kiddos who receive speech and language therapy, our therapists are scheduling individual sessions with kiddos and moving into some smaller group sessions. It is a little tricky to get, you know, three six-year-olds to participate in a Zoom call, but they are working really hard. And then Mrs. Kroll is our APE teacher and she's actually doing virtual APE with all of our students. So I, I would have to agree with John that I think that those students are definitely getting some of our best.
Yeah. My special education teachers along with instructional assistants actually come to school, print materials and hand deliver them to the people because some of, some of my kids just can't do the virtual part of it. So they actually print out the materials and they bring it to the household for them to, to, to use there. So they're, they're not, they're not falling behind there. If anything, that we're spending more time with them than in the actual.
And I, I know, I know you can't replicate everything virtually. And I'll, obviously we can't replicate everything virtually, but I just wanted to ask and get some handle on what we're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent, anything else in reports?
No, thank you.
Okay. The next item is for informational purposes. We'll move on to old business. The fiscal year 20 and the fiscal year 21, operating in capital budgets. Does anybody have any questions on this? Hearing none, we'll move to the memorandum of agreement. I believe this was in your packet. I know that the superintendent and Lisa explained what this had to do with. It's a technical difference or maybe in, Lisa can explain this. It just explains when somebody can obtain their health insurance after 25 years of working in the district. I guess it was unclear before and this is something that Lisa and the superintendent support. And I don't know if you want to comment on it briefly and if anybody has any questions, you can ask the superintendent or Lisa or unfortunately, I don't think we can go to executive session, but we can move it to the next meeting and put it in executive session. Superintendent, does anybody have any questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to support the memorandum of agreement and authorize me to sign it.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Do you want to roll call it? Madam Clerk?
You have to unmute her.
I'm muted.
Sorry about that.
You're unmuted.
Mr. Lombardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherez?
Yes.
Mr. Cunnell?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Johannes?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Vada?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes. Does anybody have any further business for the committee? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. We're adjourned. Thank you.